Scheduled committee of the whole meeting of the village attended Park Creek and Will County. Being held on Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand twenty five, beginning at five forty nine P. M. Ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Brennan?
Present.
Trustee Mahoney is absent. Trustee Mueller?
Here.
Trustee Shaw?
Present.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
President Glass.
Present. Item number three, is there a motion to consider approval of the business of the committee of the whole held on January seventh? So moved.
Second.
Ma'am clerk.
We'll call for item three, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have item number four. Discuss annexation of seventy-five fifty-one Hundred Ninety-first Street, Brookside Creek Retail Center. What would you guys like to do? Do you want to discuss it now? Or do you want to discuss it just in case there's someone from Brookside Glen that wanted to come that's not here? Do you know, Jen, there are going to be more people coming?
I know a lot of our neighbors couldn't because of the weather. Eleven were worried about coming out. So I'm not sure if he's coming or he's not.
Do you want to... It's up to you. Do you want to do most of it at the board meeting in case someone else isn't here yet that wants to come and talk on it?
It's up to you. I... It doesn't matter.
I just... Yeah, I just want to make sure that... I don't want to leave anyone out if they have something to say but they're not here yet. So do you guys want to... It's the same topic. Do you want to just vote one way or the other and then discuss it at the board meeting since there's what, five items or something on it? Is there a motion for item number four to discuss the annexation of seventy-five fifty-one?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Ma'am clerk?
We'll call for item four, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Jen. Item number five, discuss annexation development agreement for seventy-five fifty-one under a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Now second it.
Ma'am clerk?
We'll call for item five, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have item number six. Discuss the intergovernmental agreement with consolidated high school district two thirty regarding access to digital security cameras. Chief?
This is a formalization of our District Two Thirty's participation in FUSE'S video integration program. It's a really successful program that we pitched to the district a few weeks ago. They were very enthusiastic participants and they're ready to work with us in a really effective security tool. So this will allow us, at their discretion, it will allow our patrol officers and dispatch to see potential threat situations inside the school through their cameras.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions?
Just without getting into all the details of the procedures and all that, what is the response time in a situation the department wanted to request access? What... You have an approximate... How quickly could that turn around?
The way in... The way this works generally would be that should they have a situation and they were... They have me... They have various means of contacting nine-one-one to allow us to know the situations evolving. Under this agreement, we can go right into the system and to see whatever cameras they allow us to see.
Oh, I guess.
So it'd be instant access.
So they're getting preapproval under certain circumstances?
That's correct. And then as our officers respond and our dispatch responds, we will be able to see inside and see where the threat actually is. We'll have to look for it and that will save us a substantial amount of time.
Keep our officers safer.
Yeah, that's great.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
That's all two thirty?
Yes. I will say that we're pursuing agreements with the other districts as well. So I think you'll see those in the near future.
Good. Thanks.
Is there a motion for number six?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Bill and Bill. Ma'am clerk?
We'll call for item six, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have item seven, discuss proposal from retail coach to provide retail recruitment and development strategy services for Hundred Ninety-first and Harlem Avenue corridor. Is that you, Dan?
That's me.
Donna?
Yep. This is a contract to work with a retail recruitment and development strategist to help us solicit the right mix of retail establishments for the area, the entertainment area specifically around where Top Golf is coming in.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I looked it over. It's a good contract. It's... Donna and I were talking about it and some of the things that they could possibly do is bring new businesses in that are not even in this area yet. So I think it's a good partnership.
Marketing fits everything really well.
Yes, they do. Very thorough.
Is there a motion for Donna's retail coach?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Ma'am clerk, call the roll, please.
We'll call for item seven, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Next, we have item number eight, discuss overnight parking policy. So I asked to put this on the agenda tonight. No action is needed. I just wanted to discuss it as a board because as many of you know, parking has changed throughout the entire community from when this ordinance I think was put in in like nineteen fifty-eight or something, I think. And then it was amended in nineteen eighty-three or eighty-five or something like that. So it is a well over sixty years old ordinance. They amended it forty years ago. I think we need to look at it again. When they had this ordinance, the community was a lot smaller then. You had less cars. Usually it was one, two cars max. Now everyone's kids have cars. And the problem I've had with many people that I know that have contacted me for the Bremontown areas, they apply for a permit to extend their driveway. They get denied because it's too close to the property line because the lots are so small. And then they're stuck. They have this short little driveway and they can't expand. Some are lucky enough, they could go around the side and go to the back, but some of them are restricted just because of the lot lines or where the house was placed. They didn't expect the houses to be this... Or the... So many cars to be on the street as there are today. And I was talking to some of the retired policemen and like they were saying, the original purpose of this is we didn't have cameras like we have now. There's cameras all over everyone's house. You have ring doorbells. None of that existed. It was a way for them to see the community if something happened. And it's certain town or certain parts of town, like Bremontown is zone A. It's a problem. The streets are small. You have four, sometimes five or six cars per house. Some have been able to go around the side of the house depending on the layout. I know one family that has six cars. It's musical chairs every night for them. I had the same problem at my house and then we had to just pay and have a third drive put in so that we didn't have to do all the maneuvering because I usually got stuck moving the cars. So it was easier just to put the third drive on. You know, I wanted to discuss this as a board because it is a problem. It's... The community has definitely grown a lot since nineteen eighty-five or whatever that year was. And we need to address it. I don't know if we do a blanket through the town. Maybe we do it by zones. I'm not sure. I don't think we're in a position to be making that decision. I'd like to ask you guys for input and ask the police chief to do a study. Have his command staff. Talk to other communities. Are they still doing the non-parking two to five? If they are, why? If they're... If they stopped it, why did they stop it? Another alternative that I was talking to one of the residents, which I think is a really good idea. It's simple. The village doesn't charge for parking stickers. You... If they have a vehicle sticker, when the officer is patrolling at night, he could easily see that it's a Tinley Park resident. Therefore, you can allow it. If you don't have a sticker, well, then they write them up. But it would be for residents, for homeowners. It wouldn't be for apartments, you know, like the one at Hundred Fifty-Ninth by the Whistle where if they start parking in the streets because they have to buy a parking permit to park. They get, you know, X amount of cars. Jeff can explain that better than I can. They get X amount of cars per unit and then they have to pay for parking pass. So they like parking all over the street. I don't think it should pertain to that. But again, I think it's something that we should have the police do their due diligence and give us a recommendation on what they think suits the town because every part of town is different. We've had that problems. We're with the community development, with Dan Ritter, where we've talked. One fence ordinance, someone will say, well, you know, they brought that as example. Well, they got an ordinance over here and it's three miles away. It's not near there in that part of town that was built. It fit, but in this town it doesn't. So with the town growing as it did, I think it creates... I think this creates a problem for them to police it uniformly across the board. But I think one of the ideas for a starting point unless the board or chief has better ideas is maybe just if you have a vehicle sticker, they're allowed to park on the street until we do something. Maybe we do like a ninety-day trial. They get a recommendation from the command staff. We'll do like a pilot program or something. I know resident Janicek was talking about calling it a pilot program. Maybe we just do like a ninety-day trial of whatever they, you know, the police do, you know, what they suggest and we just go from there and see how it goes. So open it up to board. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts or comments on that. It's, you know, you have to be tricky because what you do for one, you have to do a cross or can you do it by zones? I don't know if you want to do that. So I think we should have them do a study and see what everyone else is doing. So trustee Shaw, do you have any opinions on that?
Always. Yeah, I just... A couple of quick thoughts on there is I think it's a good idea to revisit it, to give it some thought. My cautions on that would be that I want to make sure that we don't rush into anything and come up with a solution that we haven't thought through the downstream consequences of it. And it ends up creating, you know, squeezing the problem somewhere else, right, in everything. So we actually create more trouble than it's worth. And also want to avoid creating some sort of administrative hassle that becomes just unmanageable, whether it's, you know, here at Village Hall staff or for officers on the street or what have you. So we need to make sure that we're not placing administrative burden somewhere in a good faith attempt to have a workable solution, right? With respect to what you said about having different zones throughout the community, I think that actually makes a lot of sense. From purely from an equity standpoint, we have to make sure that we are not creating arbitrary rules. We actually have defined objectives. And then whatever criteria we set for each zone has to be based on the same objectives, even if we apply it differently in a particular zone. But we have similar criteria that defines what we do in a particular area. And they all have to have some sort of rational basis. I would also say this is an area that I myself have done a bit of research in. So I do know that there's more cutting edge or potentially even radical ideas that exist out there. And I think it would be very useful for the town to, in a measured way, do some experimenting. Do some ninety-day test cases, trying different strategies in different areas. Say, this is not the new rule. We're trying something out here. And obviously, when it came to giving tickets, you know, we might not necessarily give a full-blown ticket. We would just count the warnings, et cetera. And one last point, I live in the Parkside neighborhood. It's different than Bremontown, but we have a similar set of circumstances in terms of driveway length, opportunity and limits on how you can expand your driveway. One suggestion that I would make when we start to get into the details of this, I would suggest we explore if we're going to allow somewhat unlimited parking on the street, we consider only doing it one side of the street where, say, for instance, you know, most streets have a hydrant side and then non-hydrant side. We prohibit parking entirely on the hydrant side and then we allow it on the non-hydrant side. That way, even if it's a narrow street, you don't have the... Where you have two cars parked direct because they always do, right across from each other and you barely have room to get one car down the middle, right? Whereas if you allow it on one side, restrict it on the other, at a minimum, we still have a clear path for emergency vehicles, et cetera. So a couple of thoughts.
Good point on the staff and then one resident brought that up, which we'll touch on in a little bit. Trustee Brennan?
It definitely needs to be revisited, but I, you know, we need to put some deep thought into the changes that we're going to be looking at. And I look forward to seeing what the police department comes up with and what other, possibly what other towns are doing. I know that this was established many years ago for the ease of, you know, emergency vehicles getting through. My concern is that, you know, would be it looking like the city, you know, Chicago. There's a lot of issues. Could be issues for our snowplows too. You know, I know there was issues in the Parkside neighborhood with some plowing going on a couple of weeks ago where there was a lot of cars on the street. So, you know, I guess my biggest concern would be just vehicles left there for extended periods of time. Whether it's inoperable or someone's on vacation, whatnot, I mean, stuff like that could start to become an issue if you, you know, if there isn't clear enforcement across the board. So I just, you know, I do see there being some issues with it. But I do think it, you know, I grew up in the Parkside neighborhood and we had five cars there and one single car driveway. So you were moving five, six cars at a time, you know, depending on who needed to be at work first. So it is an issue and I understand, you know, the stress related to it. But, you know, I look forward to some of the suggestions that are brought forward.
But they can address that too, you know, the pilot program or something, trying something. Obviously, with snow, it's always got... The cars always have to be removed.
Right.
That they're exempt, you know, that they have to move the cars and then...
No, I know. It just takes time because, you know, like I said, there was issues in the Parkside neighborhood that I heard directly from Hollywood Works employees and, you know, it's... You know, you don't know when the snowplows are coming through and you don't, you know, it's... If they're being left there, it could just cause more, you know, more problems if there's more of them to deal with instead of just the two or three that may be on the street at the time and now you're... You know, it could be a lot more than that, so.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yeah, I have mixed feelings about it. I've been there. I had my daughter, my son-in-law. They lived with me their first year when they were saving for a house. I also had two other daughters. So we had a lot of drivers in our house, played the game Jackie and Cars Around. I had the times I woke up at three in the morning, panicked, said I called a car in. So I get the stress of it. I'm not so sure about zones because I don't think it's gonna... It's not gonna... Because you can't pick one neighborhood when this neighborhood would be like, well, what about us? Why can't we have, you know, overnight parking? But I don't think it's gonna... It's not going to affect everyone the same, you know. Brookside Glen, Radcliffe, I mean, they have two, three-car garages. They have the space. So it's not really going to affect them in a way as it would, you know, in Bremontown or Kimberly Heights or these homes that have the one-car garage. And it's just very dated ordinance. So I think it's an inconvenience to have to call the car in every night. I don't think people should be getting tickets in front of their own homes. I don't like that. I do like the idea of, you know, that since we do have the vehicle stickers and they're free, if you have that in your window, it's in front of your car or in front of your home, you shouldn't get a ticket. I think even now before we've been doing it, I just don't... I don't agree with that. You know, I know it's... I don't know how much time is spent driving around at night ticketing cars. It seems to come in just from people on social media what they say like, oh, some neighborhood, like, everybody got tickets. So, you know, so I know some days they're driving through neighborhoods looking. So I don't know. I have mixed feelings about it. I just think it's a big inconvenience for people that have multiple cars. So I'd be willing to just get rid of the overnight parking ordinance. I don't know. I'd be curious to what residents think about it, you know. Are they, you know, what are their thoughts on it?
Well, that's the other part of it. Besides the study they do, you're the marketing chairman. You could always work with Donna and maybe you guys put some type of, you know, put some type of study out there that you could put, people can answer.
I was kind of worried too. It's like, you know, what if you have a neighbor, like, you, you know, you have your two cars, that's it, you know, it doesn't... You don't put your car in the street at all. But if you have a neighbor that has, say, if they have five cars or six cars and every day they're parking in front of your house, that would be annoying too. And then there's nothing you could do about it if, you know, like they can't call anybody to complain because it's not an ordinance anymore. But there will be calls if that, you know...
It's gonna go both ways.
I know. So that's why it's like, you gotta really look at both sides and, I don't know. I don't know what to think about this. It is annoying though.
See what they come up with and we'll go from there. I mean, our commanders have been here a very long time.
Yeah, and if I... I think Orland doesn't have the overnight parking ban, correct? I don't think they do. Do they? Do you know? Don't know? I think they can park in the street overnight. So I'd just be curious to see like, you know, where their car break-ins, you know, do they get a lot of them? Are there any issues with emergency vehicles at night getting through? So I'd just like to compare it to other towns that have this. Because I don't know if there's a lot that have that. I grew up in Oaklawn. We didn't have that. We had all kinds of cars parked on the street. So I don't know. I'm willing to discuss after. I would like to hear the residents, like, how it affects them and what they think.
Make it a two-part. Have the police do their thing and you can work with Donna.
Okay.
Trustee Mueller?
So I really like our overnight parking ban. This is one of the reasons that I moved to this community. Like, I like the aesthetics of not having cars on the streets. I drive my kids to school most days and you could tell when you leave Tinley Park, the amount of abuse, the cars that are just, like, just sit there day after day after day. It's extremely, I don't know, frustrating to me to see that stuff. I really like the way our streets look. You know, that said, I know that certain areas are not like where I live in Brookside Glen and they have different challenges like we've all discussed. So I would be wholeheartedly against entirely getting rid of the ban. But if we want to find a very specific area and find a way to prevent abuse, I would be... I'd consider it.
I agree. Like where I live, you can fix it, right?
Yeah.
Cost me four grand. I got concrete poured on the side of the house and now I had a driveway.
Catalenton Dibs.
Like zone A in Bremontown is very difficult to fix because people are getting denied to try and extend their driveways and they can't put the driveway in front of the house. Trustee Brady?
Well, there's not much left that I could add to what everybody's already said. And I agree with the majority of it. And certainly it needs to be tweaked. But there's also a factor that was brought up and, you know, you talk about emergency vehicles with snow. How do you know to move the car? Because you're not going to get the snow until two o'clock in the morning. You're already in bed, okay? I have no problem because that's the time I'm coming home. But also known for having a large family and many, many parties, we have lots of my brothers and sisters' cars on the street. And usually, we call in. We call in to the police department, say the car's up here or someone's staying overnight or whatever it might be. And I like the idea of the hydrant, no hydrant one. But another factor is that, okay, I have this area over here that says I can have cars on the street. Well, in my neighborhood, we can't have cars on the street. So I can't have a party, but you can have a party. I can't have families over, but you can have your family over. So you're going to run into that problem as well. And so that's why I'm not too happy about zones. And again, all these ideas are just being thrown out to get some ideas and get a movement to talk about it, to see what we can do. So it certainly is with all these different things that were said by everybody to take some notes. But chief, wasn't it also, I know you weren't here, I wasn't here, but it was a part of... So we didn't have negative cars on the streets, okay? That may be not only junked, as someone mentioned, about being left there for days, but that it was... They're up to no good. They're casing a house or the neighborhood or whatever it might be. Wasn't that part of the idea behind this?
Yes.
Yes? You know, nobody's brought that up, that there was a deterrent from having crimes in the neighborhood, you know, with people sitting there, you know, checking it out. So that's a thought as well. But there's a lot of good ideas that have been thrown out. Would have a sticker, letting know people, the hydrant idea. It's just something that we need to address. And I think as the mayor said, get a committee through marketing and wherever to find out what they can do or what they would like, okay?
Thank you. Clerk O'Kenna?
I agree pretty much with everybody. I see the different thought processes. Not just emergency vehicles, but my daughter used to live in Parkside. The buses, the school buses coming through have a real issue there. People are parked on the streets as well. The only other thing is if we go to a mandatory sticker for parking, that does mean here at the village it will have to be tracked again. You'll have to bring in your registration in order to get those stickers again. Just... That's just an FYI. Not a big deal, but just something to think about. So that's all.
I don't think we're tracking them.
Not right now, but if someone comes in and says, I need a sticker because I'm going to park on the street, you have to prove registration and that they live here.
Yeah, but we don't track them, is what I'm saying. They just show... I think you just show an ID.
We used to. We don't anymore.
Oh, no, not with the new ones. You just show... People walk up, they show an ID and they get a sticker. Right. Is that right, Laura, or no? Okay.
Right, but...
That's what... That's kind of what I was getting to about understanding the downstream consequences of whatever we do. I mean, when it comes to public safety, that's first and foremost, you know, providing services and ensuring public safety. That's our primary role, right? But we can't... We can keep it the way it is and say there's... Forget overnight parking. You can't park on the street at all. Well, that's gonna maximize the value of public safety, but it's kind of ridiculous, right? So whatever the objectives and whatever the criteria we apply, they have to balance all the different needs.
But just, we may not track it, but someone, and I witnessed it, when people come in and say, you know, here's my ID, but we have four cars and they're handed four stickers. Point now is, if you've got four cars, you need to show four registrations. His point being, that was it. I wasn't implying that it was being tracked. It's just that it used to be, I mean, we would send notices out, you know, don't forget, and you gotta bring this or this or this. Well, we'd have to go back to that.
Yeah, you're... It's an administrative cost is your point.
There's a lot of moving pieces.
It's administrative cost to receive phone calls all night and put it in the system. All great points. So yeah, so trustee Sullivan, if you and Donna and chief and you could work with trustee Brennan on that, the four of yous, that'd be great. So thank you. Next, we have number nine, receive comments from the public. Would anyone from the public here to comment?
Good evening.
I like your guys' discussion on this matter.
One second.
Oh, you're gonna time me now? I like your guys' discussion on this matter. You've hit every point, I think. But you really, you have to say that between your worst-case scenarios and your best-case scenarios is just a phone call that someone has to make. So I mean, for the most part, you could have every problem you guys mentioned tonight just because someone made a phone call. I get human nature. If you don't have that rule, more people are probably going to leave their cars out. It's just going to happen. I like the idea of a pilot program. We've got two neighborhoods where this seems to be an issue. Mr. Mayor, I lived in that house for fifty years. I had two driver-aged kids when I was young and two parents with one car. I don't know how we did it, must be traumatic shock, lack of memory, but somehow that one car was used by everyone and there was another space in the driveway. Most of the cars seemed to be made, you know, for two cars at that time. We've got two neighborhoods where this is a real big problem. I suggest we start with a pilot program there. Everything you guys said tonight, the studies, talking to the other communities, sounds like a great idea. And I think the public will really appreciate it being addressed because we hear it every, every year. But one of the things you could do somehow is take, get some data right now. How many cars tonight at two o'clock are parked on the streets in Parkside and Bremington? And then you get your 90-day, six-month pilot program going and you see and you say, well, it's 15% more cars out now that we've changed this. Because there are public safety issues. But again, all those public safety issues are there if someone calls in and says, I'm leaving my car out tonight. And if they do that tomorrow and the next day and the next day, you could tweak it. I mean, a car, Colleen, like you said, the parking in front of your neighbor's house, it's gonna happen right now. If you call in and say, I'm gonna leave my car out and you park in front of your neighbor's house, you're not gonna get a ticket for doing that. So all of the worst-case stuff is with us today and tomorrow and solely based on whether or not someone calls in. If I had all the money in the world, or you guys did, I'd say, hey, we got LPR cameras on every car. We don't have a problem here. But you could also see with the public safety, if there is an issue, I don't wanna go to where you have to have signage, you were saying, because that's a lot of money. You're gonna have to put signage all over the community, those signs cost money and look bad. So it'd be best, I think, if we found a way to do it without infrastructure, changes like that. But I think that it could be done, it could be studied. We could have a before dataset and an after dataset, including public commentary and I think we might get somewhere. But what really struck me tonight was when you said about a long time ago, when it was 40 or 50 years ago, because it was, that's how it was. And nobody I knew growing up on that street, when I rode my BMX bicycle around the place, had four cars. There was nobody. I mean, if somebody had three cars, that was it. And in Bremington, a lot of the lots are narrow. Only some of the houses can have a driveway, go on the side of the house or even in back of it. So those two neighborhoods, I don't think in terms of equity that everyone's going to complain if you say, we're gonna run this pilot program on the two neighborhoods most affected by this. It could be good, it could be bad. The other thing nobody mentioned though is street cleaning. And in that case, if the public really wants it, your car's out there for street cleaning, you're getting a ticket. Your car's out there in the snow, you're getting a tow. Chicago has handled all of these problems, including the neighborhoods without it, with it, towing, street cleaning. In Chicago, they'll write you a ticket even though they're not gonna sweep the street on that Thursday after 10:30 that the sign says. The cop's always there with the book, I don't know if you'll see the street cleaner, but I don't think this is insurmountable and everything you guys said tonight's right there. I think you could put your heads to it, the car's gotta be operable, it's gotta be a Tinley Park resident, can't be a work vehicle, can't be a boat trailer. I've seen boat trailers out there. Can't be jet ski trailer, can't be a car on cinder blocks. I don't think any of these are too difficult to work through and I think it would be responsible to say, we start here where it's the greatest impact and see. And we come out of six months, I think you kinda gotta go six months because you need seasons in this. You almost need summer, fall and winter at the very least. And we come out of it and it's, it's good or bad and then let it roll from there. But I appreciate you guys taking the time to talk about it and I think the people, at least in these two neighborhoods, will appreciate it.
What's the other one, what's the other neighborhood you're talking about, Bremington and...
Parkside.
Oh, Parkside.
Mostly the older housing stock.
Yeah.
Really was built for one car. And tonight I got, I had to drive my daughter's car here with the hand-crocheted steering wheel cover because if I left, or if I took my car, my wife's coming home, she's gonna park, if, then I'd have to be doing the car jog in this weather out here, which you guys should make warmer. So I, I mean, it's, it's all over the place, but I don't think it's rocket science. I think it's, it's just good policymaking, considerate thought and well-written ordinance that will work here. And if it goes wrong, that's a bad six months.
You could also limit it to one car per household too, to start too.
I think that's a great, that's a great idea right there. In fact, that's what I see. That's what I see. Some of the streets are narrower, you might have to look at that. But I, I think, I'm not seeing tremendous abuse on it right now, except for what you said, Mr. Mayor, about the apartments and the condos, the more multifamily units where they charge for parking.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any public comments?
So a lot of what I've heard tonight has been really good information, right? It's going back and forth, but a lot of what I saw just from my standpoint was from the police department. You call in your car, you have thousands of, there's gotta be thousands of cars called in every night, online, phone calls. How do you guys put all that information together? And the people that have to be put into service to handle that and then give that information to the officers to track that down in the field to make sure that those cars that are on the street are actually there and called in? And like it was said earlier, how do you know that's a Tinley Park resident? You know, is that somebody that's casing an area or looking to do something or do harm or whatever else? Once again, a sticker would alleviate that issue because only a resident could purchase a sticker and put it on a registered vehicle. So my issue was always a work vehicle because I don't have enough room in my driveway for it. But if I move my car out to the street, I can put my vehicle in the driveway. I'm not blocking the sidewalk for my neighbors and upsetting everybody that I, you know, live around. So, but there's been a lot of good discussions here, but it's gonna take some time, I think, to really put something together and it's really good to see you guys looking at that from a lot of different aspects. I had a lot of different thoughts, but everything kinda came by so quick, so. And that's pretty much all I really wanted to say. I just wanted, I wanted to see how things went and how this was discussed and handled.
Are you in Bremington?
I am, I'm in Bremington. So I have, I can fit basically three cars, I could fit four if they're short. I can't put a driveway, another driveway in because I just don't have the room for it. It's not zoned for it. I've been there for four years, I've never had a ticket, so, but...
Can't say that anymore.
Huh?
Can't say that anymore.
No, you can't say that anymore. So there's a first time for everything, right?
Just don't hit your address.
Well, the thing was, is like, and you're allowed to do it three times, but it didn't specify that I read whether it was three times a week, three times a month, three times a year.
Three consecutive.
Three consecutive, gotcha.
You should be exempt just for the shoes.
It's been a long day, don't go in my outfit.
I was like, I think those are Crocs.
They're Crocs. So anyway, that's all I had to say. So I just wanted to come in and see what kind of discussion was happening and it looks like you guys have a good, a good hold on it. A pilot program would be a great idea. But I think a lot of, some of the other ideas that were brought up was like, you can't just do one thing for one area and not for another because a lot of people are gonna get upset about that, right?
It's gotta be fair and equitable.
Yeah, and as far as the emergency vehicles go, great idea because you need to leave those lanes open. When it snows, I lived in the city, I knew what it was like. I set an alarm, I woke up at two o'clock in the morning, so I knew that's when the snow was coming. And if I didn't move my car, it was getting towed. And good luck trying to find that car the next day. Because they would pick it up, they would pull it and they would drop it in a different area. You gotta call the police department to find out exactly where they put it and then you'd have to go track it down and find it.
They'll pay a huge fine.
And, well, yeah, you have to pay a huge fine, but they wouldn't deport it. They would just move it, relocate it. They'd pick it up, they'd move it and they'd drop it.
Been there, done that.
And, but you didn't have to pay a fine, but you had to go and find it,
Right.
which took pretty much half the day. You couldn't go to work because you had to find your vehicle. So it's, 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 there's a lot of facets and a lot of moving parts in this. And it's just a matter of just trying to find a healthy mix for everybody, which I guess is pretty much impossible because everybody's got different opinions and what they need and what their needs are and their wants. So I just think it just seems, it seems to be something that needs to be revisited since it was 58 years ago that they put this into, into, into force. So, and with kids now, you get college kids, everybody's got a car. You got parents that have a car, I have a work vehicle, I have to have it, I have no choice, so, yeah.
Just pay attention to the, to the call meeting agendas. Trustee Brennan and Chief are gonna work together and social media, Donna and Colleen will work on something, maybe we'll put some type of poll out or something and just kinda get an idea of what everyone's thinking.
I think it'd be great, just, I mean, if not anything, to alleviate some of the pressure the police have on them, try to track all these cars down, to see who's, who lives here, who doesn't live here, what needs to be here, what doesn't. They have more important things to do than being able to, you know, at two to five in the morning, in my opinion, than having to handle that.
Do you have a hydrant on your side of the street?
I, I do.
Well, then you're on the other side now.
That's okay, it's fine, I'm fine with that. Put it into ordinance, I'll follow it, you know? It's like anything else, everybody's got their, you know, their problems and you just kinda gotta roll with everything, but what we have to do is just get the ball rolling, right? Just get everything moving, start something and try to do a little something. That's all, that's all we can do. We're a community, we all gotta get along and we all have to, we can't all get our way. So all we can do is the best we can.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Mr. Mayor, can I just comment real quick?
Sure.
Unless, was there someone else in the public?
Is there any other public comment for the committee at all? Ken, it's all yours.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to reiterate a little bit about a pilot program, but I think this is, this applies to a lot of stuff that we do. We always try to have a well-thought-out, comprehensive answer to whatever the problem is that comes up and I think that that's wise, but sometimes we need to think in terms of lowering the bar, not having fear of failing and, you know, in business, a lot of times we talk about fail small, fail fast. So take a chance, try something new and, and if it doesn't work, doesn't work. And keep your investment low, both in time and money. Take a lot of, a lot of pictures, a lot of data and evaluate it. But, but, you know, if we spend a year trying to get this perfect, then we're already failing, right? So I, I like the idea of come up with an idea, give it a shot, analyze it before, understand the results that you're coming out with. And I don't have any concerns about doing something different in different parts of the community based on the, the nature of that particular neighborhood. It should be in keeping with the, with the micro-community that we have. And that's why I said upfront, as long as we are operating from the same set of principles and objectives, but we apply, we're applying the same principles and objectives everywhere, but based on the makeup of the neighborhood, we might have a different answer. In my mind, that's okay.
Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
Do we keep track of, do we have a log, like you go back and look for the past year, how many calls we've had online and also phone calls? Is this, is that comparable?
We can go, we can look and see what we, what we've had.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't have to be an exact number, I don't think we need to overcomplicate that, but I, I'm just curious of, like you said, is it thousands?
It's not gonna be in the thou, it's not gonna be in the thousands.
Yeah.
But it's, actually, it's a manageable number.
Okay.
But we can look at that and get to what...
And then also, then we could pinpoint where we're looking at, whose, what areas are affected most. So I think with that, any information that we can get from Chief and, yeah, we go with Donna and Laura and I and Chief and just keep it simple, don't have to overcomplicate it.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Madam, is there a motion to adjourn the call?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned, we will be starting the annexation public hearing shortly after.